All right, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. And if anybody joins, they can just go ahead and join. Stephanie, are we ready on your end?
Yep, we are ready.
All right, um, and I think I'm already sharing my screen, so we can go ahead and get started. All right, happy Friday, everyone. So I'm glad you guys could be here. Some of you have been here for all of these work sessions. So thank you so much for sharing so much of your time with us. Today, we want to hear about, again, for some of you, what's working and what is not working, so that we can strengthen round 16, which is coming up at the beginning of the new year. For this work session, we are going to work on focusing on owner occupied rehab projects. After this work session today, I will be sending out a link to a questionnaire as a follow-up. Please take a few minutes to fill out this questionnaire. Your feedback is really important to the work that we're doing. So the objectives for this work session, for those of you that are joining us for the first time, are to create an open forum for grantees and applicants to share experiences, challenges, and recommendations, to gather feedback, to inform round 16 grant policy, and application design, and to strengthen collaboration and transparency between the Housing Trust Fund staff and partners. The format and guidelines for today's session will be conversation-driven, with guiding questions and open dialogue. Comments will be recorded for policy development notes, and all feedback is valuable. So please focus on constructive ideas and solutions. So we are going to begin by talking about your experiences navigating previous funding rounds, and what has worked well, and what challenges that you all have faced. All right, so part one of the discussion. Our goals are going to be to understand what applicants and grantees have found most and least effective in past rounds. So while we're going through this today, especially for those of you that have been on the other work sessions, I want us to really focus in on owner occupied rehab, as the work session is basically set up the same, obviously, for, again, those of you who have been on the other work sessions. So really focus in on owner occupied rehab, and how can we make the policies and application processes and draws and all of those things really more functional for those of you who are involved in owner occupied rehab, because it's a very specific niche to our projects. So really focus in on that and provide us information towards owner occupied rehab, because all the work sessions look very similar. Obviously, we're using the same slide decks, but we want to hear about owner occupied rehab and how we can all work together in that space. So the discussion questions for part one are: What parts of the application process have been most challenging for your organization? Were the application instructions and eligibility criteria clear? If not, what needs more clarification? How could the timeline or review process be improved? Did you feel that the communication during the grant process, either pre-award, contracting, or reporting, was consistent and timely? And how can we better support smaller or first-time applicants and grantees during the application and implementation? And for those of you who are on here for the first time, you can just raise your hand, and Stephanie will unmute you.
Andrea, I sent the request on mute.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, hi, everyone. Hope you're having a great Friday. Looking at, you know, kind of looking at what parts of the application have been most challenging. I mean, I think overall, like, one, like, kind of looking back at maybe some past rounds that we've been in, and something that we've really appreciated. I know that we've kind of drummed on a lot, is like the scoring matrix, and having like those clear scoring kind of categories to know how to structure our proposal. But then I think, too, like, a lot of, in creating the budgeting, like, I know in the past, it's been very geared towards, like, new development and developers and new unit production. And so sometimes I feel like in putting together the budget, it's a little, it's not quite as aligns with what, like, owner occupied rehab might look like. And then with that, like, through going through that whole process and getting to, like, the financial part of clear, because we're kind of, you know, like a nonprofit that's running 24/7 around the calendar and aren't really asking for specific, you know, like, we're building this one, you know, multi-unit development, but it's, you know, very much just how we operate every day. And so, you know, we're constantly fundraising and that there's a lot of emphasis that's put on, like, having the set capital stack for all of your units to start. But I feel like with owner occupied rehab, because we're, you know, it's a multi-year grant essentially for us, and we're constantly fundraising through that whole process. So, yeah, so in looking at scoring and everything, too, of what that, the financial piece of how we can better communicate how we fundraise and our fundraising plans and all of that, that's more than, like, having the initial capital stack all lined up to begin with, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, too, like, in, once the kind of contracts awarded, being able to, like, meet before our, with our first, to go over, I think, like, the draw schedule and understanding that a little bit clearer of how we need to submit draws. So then when we're, you know, ready to do our first draw, that it can just, we can run through it really smoothly, because I know, yeah, for, I'm sure many people, like, getting those reimbursements in timely is important for our cash flow.
Right, yeah. Does anybody else have anything that they want to add on to what Andrea said? Were there any policies that created unintended challenges or confusion for any of you that are previous grantees? Okay, all right. Unless anybody has anything, we're gonna move on. Three, two, one, all right. All right, so Andrea, that was really helpful information and feedback.
Sorry, Terry just raised his hand. Terry, I'm gonna send that to unmute.
Thanks, I appreciate it. And I'm having some trouble being on the webinar. I don't know, I got kicked off, but I got back in. So I want to go ahead and make this comment in case I, you know, have some technical difficulties. I tried to put it in the chat, but it's too many characters. So what I, maybe we'll do is I'll just read my comment, because this is our comment. This is far and away the only comment we have as far as what we consider important. I got some other little suggestions, but this, this is the big one. And it is, "Please do not use the potential round 16 funding tracks that were reviewed at the September 23 Barnes Fund meeting. That track allocates $13,300,000 for rentals, $5,130,000 for homeownership, and $570,000 for owner occupied rehab. To use those allocations would perpetuate a lower funding level for existing Nashville homeowners. Westminster's suggestion is to combine homeownership and owner occupied rehab so that there are only two categories. One would be owner occupied, new or rehab, and the other would be rental. And then set the allocations on the type of housing that Metro wants to support. So, for example, if Metro wants 50% owner occupied, new or rehab housing, and 50% rental housing, then allocate half and half, which would be $8,550,000 to owner occupied, new or rehab, and $8,550,000 to rentals. And then if not enough allocations for either category, not enough applications for either category met the minimum scoring level, then the remaining dollars would be available for the second category. Or, just a second approach would be to continue with the practice in previous Barnes rounds and only have one track with all applications competing for the same dollars." So I know that was a lot. I tried to put it in the chat, but it, there's a limit on the, on the number of characters. So I can email this, Catherine, to you and James, if you'd like, and that way, you know, it won't be all verbal. It'll be easier to, I think, follow.
Right, thanks. Yeah, you can, you can email it to us. And anybody else that has anything, feel free to email any of your comments to us after.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have anything before we move on? You guys are definitely not hurried through this. Feel free to speak as long as you want during any of these discussions segments. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on, and we're gonna now shift and talk about how project costs and eligible activities are defined. So our goal here is to assess clarity and practicality of eligible costs and funding categories. The questions we're gonna focus on here are: Have we been clear enough on eligible and ineligible activities? Were there any expenses you expected to be eligible, but they weren't? Are current cost documentation requirements manageable? And what additional guidance or templates would help streamline your reporting or reimbursement process? And I just want to kind of leave this with you guys, too. When we're talking about these specific kind of areas, if there's something you want to mention, but it's not really tied to a specific question, but it's tied to kind of the area we're focusing on, please feel free to, you know, jump on and kind of discuss that, too. It doesn't have to be tied to the question, if it's tied to kind of the area that we're focusing on here.
Terry, I sent the request on mute.
Thanks. Yes, so I went back through our round 15 application to get ready for this work session. And, and kind of my conclusion was, we can, there's been so much progress made since the early days of how Barnes is organized and how it fits with owner occupied rehab, that we're able to work with the templates. I mean, there, it is a pretty much kind of designed for developer more and new builds, but I think we can work with the current forms. So I don't really have anything big to comment on it. I, I think we're able to put, you know, asterisks and explain how we're doing things, and it seems to be working for us now. And I appreciate all the progress that have been made.
Thanks, Terry.
Andrea, I'm sending the request to unmute.
Yeah, and like, I kind of second, Terry, that we can definitely make the templates work, but just for, like, better clarity to know, you know, like, I think, you know, we put a lot of, like, the project management or assessment time and all of that under, like, pre-development, and just getting, like, clarity of, like, is that the place where it should be? Or, you know, should it be, are we allowed to call it something else? And so wanting just to be sure that, that, like, those kind of tweaks and asterisks are okay and not going to be out of compliance, or, you know, make it look like we're trying to bill things where we aren't supposed to. Just get better, like, understanding there, but then appreciate, like, all the, you know, how we're able to break down construction costs and all of that. And, you know, we try, when we're doing those, you know, setting our budget of trying to guesstimate where we're gonna spend the most in each kind of rehab cat, like, construction area, so, you know, like roofing, we try to estimate those. And so those are really kind of a best guess that we can give for the future that, on homes that we haven't assessed yet. And so also just making sure that that's okay, and that, you know, if those, if those numbers are off, but all the other, but, you know, our hard costs are what we said their hard costs were gonna be, if that's acceptable, or if it, you know, goes off by too much, then we need to let you all know. So just, yeah, getting some clarity on some of those policies around the budget and how we're, you know, recording and reporting everything.
Yeah. Is this something where, like, a pre-award workshop with, with James for compliance would help you guys prior to maybe even application? Or if you got an award, the pre-award prior to, to contract would be helpful for you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I think it could be helpful for us pre-application, so, so that we're sure that we are, you know, creating that budget in a way that is, is okay. Yeah, and then just like, also with, I know in the round 15, there was a template, a budgeting template that you wanted, or the sources and uses, maybe that you wanted everybody to use, and just kind of understanding that that was, like, mandatory requirement. And so is that truly mandatory? Is everybody following it and understanding exactly, yeah, how we report out on all of that? So ahead of time, it'd be great to have, yes, like, just a straight, like, budget, financial info session as part of the informational sessions, I think, in the pre-application.
Great, that's good to know, because I kind of feel like I'm hearing that what we put out in round 15, saying that we wanted you guys to use the sources and uses template. Maybe we weren't clear enough with saying, yes, this is mandatory, everybody has to use it. So maybe we need to be more clear about our expectations going forward in round 16, so we need to have those conversations. So thank you, that's really helpful for us. Does anybody else have anything else here?
Terry, I'm just gonna request to unmute again.
Yes, I, I want to say, there may be a difference in how we operate than others, but we, Westminster is a licensed home improvement contractor, and we do our own work. And so for that reason, we don't have trades, like, we don't, we don't call in a plumber to come and do the sink, and then we call in an electrician. I mean, we have our own people who do the work. So for us, with the way the forms work, and it works for us, is we put a total in for construction costs, and that works. We really don't want more, we don't want more specifics on how to break out the cost in detail, because we don't have it that way. So we don't have, like, an invoice from a roofer, or, well, we do for roofer sometimes, but we don't have an invoice from a plumber, and an electrician, and a carpenter. We have our own handy people who do the work. So we really like the way it's laid out now, where we can just put the total in for construction, maybe an asterisk to explain what it is, but we really do not want to have something where we have to break out electrical, carpentry. I mean, we'd be asking our people to put down six-minute increments on their timesheets. That would, that would just, we just couldn't do it. So we don't want more, we don't want more. We want to be able to put our total, we go in and do a house, we do a house for $4,000. It's all our internal people plus materials from Home Depot and Lowe's. And we don't want to break it out further than that, and it wouldn't mean anything if we did. And the, and your contractors wouldn't either. We just happen to be a contractor, so I really like it the way it is.
Yeah, and I think that you're definitely one of the exceptions to the rules, because you are your own internal contractor. And so we, you know, we can have conversations about that, but we definitely work with you pretty well, because you do turn in your invoices for your Lowe's and Home Depot. And so you are breaking it down the way that you should be. And we can definitely have some follow-up conversations about that, but not everybody operates the way you do. You are definitely, you do definitely operate a little differently than everybody else does.
Yes, thanks, Catherine. And I'm really thinking about in the application process, the sources and uses in the budget. We just like to put our construction cost in as one line. As long as we can do that, it'll work. And then we can give you whatever detail you need, you know, on the draws.
Yeah, and I think that, too, is something that, you know, if you needed to have, during, like, some sort of a pre-work, pre-award workshop, that even compliance could talk to you about what that looks like on, on those worksheets to help keep you in compliance for that also.
Right.
Thanks, Terry.
Andrea, I'm sending your request to unmute.
Thanks, this is all really helpful, and I appreciate this. I think it would be, what could be really cool would be if we could get the folks who have been owner occupied rehab together with you all to kind of, like, what, what should some standards be? Because, and like, Terry and I talking with each other, it's like, oh, I didn't know you did it this way, and I didn't know you did it that way, that maybe, like, we could come to some good, like, here are some good common practices, especially when it comes to, like, budgets and stuff, that we could set a baseline of what, of how it could be. Because I don't know why we break down ours in such detail. I don't think it's been a requirement in the past, it's just how we've, like, historically done it. So, yeah.
I'll come in real quick. That is an OFA requirement. So even, you know, we, we, we do housing development in, through, like, governmental finance, right? So a lot of times, staff spend some time, like, shedding light on that topic, right? But this is good information that we can take back and work with you guys to try to articulate what that actually is and what would suffice for finance.
Yeah, okay.
Good discussion.
Thanks.
All right, before we move on, does anybody else have anything? Right. Thank you, Andrea and Terry. I think this is really great information, and it's really good conversation for those that aren't participating in the conversation, but are taking in this information, because the two of you are very active owner occupied grantees. So I think that everybody can learn from these conversations that we're having with you guys. So thank you so much for your feedback here. So we're gonna move into the implementation and compliance side. We know that this is a place where many challenges can emerge once contracts are underway. Our goal here is to identify challenges in post-award phases and compliance documentation. All right, so what are the biggest challenges during contract execution? How could we improve and draw, compute, how can we improve the draw and documentation process? Do you feel confident understanding the audit expectations? And what additional support or training could we offer to make compliance easier to manage? So going back to the audit expectations box, audit expectations could be your financial audit, or also just having your grant audited. So I just want to, like, put that there, because it got brought up at the last one. Audit can mean two different things, you know, having your, your grant audited, or how do you, do you feel okay with the audit expectations for your financial audits? Two different things there. So if you have any questions about either one of them, we can talk about that.
Terry, I'm sending a request to unmute.
This is not really a minor point, but I think something that, because it's not, we don't have a cash flow problem, but I think it would be good to understand what the timeline is from the point the draw is submitted, to the point that the, you know, the money comes into the bank. And it probably has stages, like, submit the draw, then it has to be reviewed and inspected, then it has to go to, you know, finance, and then it gets paid. Because what I really, sometimes I don't know when I turn it in, is it gonna be 30 days? Is it gonna be 60 days? And I know there could be reasons it gets stuck at any point, but just some kind of an understanding of what the general expectation should be and when the cash comes in.
That's a really good question, and I wish I had a really good answer for you. But right now, I am the lone staff member for Barnes, so I'm doing pretty much everything. So that's number one, that's kind of slowing things down. But number two is that we, during the OFA audit for project return, and with, with our compliance, we set some standards in place for some things that we're, we're going to do with all of our draws. So we are looking much deeper into all of our draws and all of the documentation that's being submitted with all of our draws. So it is taking a little bit longer for all of the draws to be submitted. And all of the draws do require inspection. So depending on how many draws are submitted at the same time, depends on how soon our inspector can get each one turned over. So right now, this is not a bad thing. A lot of draws are getting turned in at the same time, and this is great. We want to see that. We want to see that these projects are being completed, and that everybody's drawing down on their grants. So these are all good things, but at the same time, it also slows down on getting the draws turned over. So it is taking a little longer for the draws to get turned over right now, because we are taking a little longer to look at everything that's submitted with your reimbursements. Our inspector has a lot of draw, a lot of inspections that he's doing right now. So while, a couple months ago, I could have told you, you know, we're looking at four to six weeks. Right now, it's just taking a little bit longer. So I can't give you, like, a week's number. I can just say that we're working as hard as we can to get your draws turned over right now.
Andrea, I'm sending a request to unmute.
Yeah, that's helpful to know and hear. I think it could be useful that if, like, there's changes that are made, that there's, like, a training that you could do with us to show us, like, how you want it done differently. And maybe that would maybe save you all times, you don't have to answer individual questions from each of us, but like, or at the beginning of the contract, of doing, like, a, you know, here's how, with everybody, like, here's how the draw process works, and what documentation and how it should be submitted could be helpful.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a really good idea. Thanks, Andrea.
I know, you're very busy, so, and you're one person, so I get it, like, understanding.
Anybody else have anything? All right, moving right on. All right, so part four, we are going to gather ideas and recommendations for round six policy and scoring improvements. All right, so here, I want you to really focus in on your owner occupied projects when considering these questions. Like, really think about owner occupied. You guys are here for owner occupied, but really, really focus in on that. So are there any specific policy areas or scoring criteria that you feel need to be updated or clarified? How could the scoring process better reflect project readiness or community impact? What types of technical assistance or pre-application support would be most beneficial with your type of project? Are there new trends or challenges in the housing landscape that we should consider as we are developing round six policies? as we are developing round six policies? And what could the Barnes Fund do to strengthen partnerships and communication throughout the funding cycle?
Andrea, I'm sending the request unmute.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of second Teri's sentiments at the beginning around the fun, funding structure. And I know, you know, owner-occupied rehab, we've been, you know, raising our fist about, oh, but we're different, we're different, so you should think of us differently. However, I'm just really concerned about there only being $570,000 available for owner-occupied rehab. That would mean that likely one project and agency would be funded, because I'm going to ask for the max, Teri's going to ask for the max, if there's anybody else who's in there, like, you know, it's just, it's going to severely limit the number of owner-occupied rehab projects that are going to be happening in the city. So just really concerned about having such a limiting amount of funds for owner-occupied rehab, and feeling that, you know, to Teri's point, too, if it could be, you know, part that we're just included in with homeownership, and, you know, competing amongst those dollars, or with the wider pool, but then looking at, you know, what are the bonus points? And so kind of to the point of the workshop back in September of, you know, if the policies and the priorities, you know, according to the UHS is for older adults and vulnerable populations and people, you know, the lowest, you know, 50% AMI and below and stuff, then structuring bonus points in a way that would help get you to where you want to be projects-wise to meet the need that's been defined by the UHS, and kind of the strategy behind that. So really feeling we're gonna, you're, we're going to see much less repairs happening in the city if it stands the way it is. You know, we were prepared to be moving into a third-tiered community, and I know Teri's prepared to grow as well, but we need, you know, city support investment to help make that happen. And, you know, we bring in other dollars from private and corporate and all of that, that it really is kind of that great mix of bringing everybody to the table, but having the city kind of be our, you know, that, that first money, and is really important for us to be able to grow that pot of money to say, hey, the city's behind this, and other people can, can jump on. So, again, just, yeah, really, really concerned about there only being $500,000 allocated for owner-occupied rehab, and how that's going to impact Nashvilleans who have lived here for so long, for 30-plus years.
Thanks, Andrea.
Teri, I'm sending you a request unmute.
Thanks. So my question is, so I agree with that, but I also have a question about how the scoring works, and this could be something, you don't, obviously can't answer it today, but to be in real clear in the, when the round comes out, I couldn't figure out last, so we were funded, so I'm grateful and I'm very thrilled, obviously, but I couldn't figure out how the scoring worked. Was it the total number, number of points that you got, or was it your percentage of the points that were available to you? Because, like, I think we scored very high on the total number of points that were available to us, like, the percentage-wise, I think we did, I'm not sure about that, but I don't think we've had as many total points, because I don't think there were many total points available to us. So I think when it comes to owner-occupied rehab, there are categories where we, that don't apply, so we can't get any points. And so somehow to make sure that our scoring represents what we could max out on versus what's, and considers that not all points are available to us, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, Teri. Anybody have anything else before we move on?
Andrea, I'm sending the request unmute.
Sorry. You guys know Teri and I can talk all day, so. I think when looking at the scoring, too, what was so helpful in the path of the scoring matrix was, I think it brought clarity to, when you look at, like, partnerships, like, what counts as a partnership, and how do you demonstrate that? And it would be like, you know, if you have a letter and, you know, this from so many organizations, then this is what the score would be. And then if it's more just like a, you know, a less formal, then this is what it would be. So having that, like, clear understanding for everybody to set that standard of this is what you need to show, that this is a partnership, or I think, and like, when you're asking your questions, I think maybe some of the questions over time have stuck around, but maybe just need to be, you know, a fresh kind of look at them. So if you, if you want to know, you know, what, what is the community impact of your project, just asking that a little bit more directly, to, so that we have that space to explain it in the way that it's going to be scored there. And then I think as we, like, look at, you know, asking about, like, the team piece of it, it is, I think, more structured towards, like, new, like, development in that, how they're, like, ask about, you know, your team members and your staff who are part of your organization. And so, you know, for us, like, I think we have, we have great experienced staff, they have great certifications, but I think overall, though, our organization, you know, we've been around for 30 years doing this. And so being able to, like, talk about our historical, as an organization, our organizationally, our, our, you know, longevity is something that I would love to be able to, to get a little bit of credit for, too, of, you know, we've, we've been doing this for 30 years. And so just because I've only been here for five years doesn't mean we don't have that institutional knowledge, and from our board and from everybody, this, the, you know, we've built it over 30 years. So, so, yeah.
Thanks. That's a really good point to bring up, Andrea.
Thanks.
Teri, I'm sending the request unmute.
Yes, one of the specific things that I think that you could score for the owner-occupied rehab is our ability to put the money in use, because there, for very good reasons, and we've heard them said, and they make perfect sense. If you're building, there's zoning, and there's all kinds of things that cause you not to be able to get through your grant in the two-year cycle. But for the rehab, we got people right now who, you know, need water heaters, and we can put the money in place now. So perhaps there could be points or bonus points for your ability to put the money in use. And the other thing I want to say is, I do, I did like the scoring matrix that was out, were available in the past, and it had range, the way it was worked, it had ranges, so it had, like, you can get up to 10 points in this, and then the lower number was for these things, and the middle number was for this, and then the maximum was for this. And that was very helpful, because it allowed you to have some judgment, because, like, one letter of support is not equal to another letter of support. But it also gave you kind of ranges, so you could say, well, I think I'm pretty good here, so I might be in the eight, and over here, I really don't have it. So it, it did give you, it gave you structure, but it also allowed for subjectivity for the evaluators. So I thought that was a really good document that we have used in the past.
Yes, and we agree. We've, we, we have definitely heard that everybody likes the matrix.
Rashida, I'm sending the request unmute.
Hey. I agree with pretty much everything the other ladies have stated, but I, I just wanted to point out also, to add to Teri's comment, that not, not only is the money in rehab used, you know, more, more swiftly, and, you know, arguably more efficiently, not saying that everything else isn't important, because it's all important, but at that last meeting, Stephen Watts pointed out that although that we won't meet our goals to create affordable housing units, if we are losing units due to lack of being able to preserve them. And so I just, the comment earlier about the 575 being available just for this owner, homeowner occupied piece, that was my first time hearing about it, but I also think that that should be reconsidered, because preservation is an easy way to keep the numbers up. So I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Rashida.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to comment before we move on? Going once, going twice. All right. All right. So I, I really, really appreciate everybody's dialogue today. You guys have shared some really great insights, and this is really going to help us as we move into setting policy for round 16. And just as you, staff and commissioners start making some, you know, decisions and having conversation around, around 16. So let us close with a summary of what our next steps will be. Staff are going to compile and summarize all of your feedback from today's session and from the last two sessions. This feedback is going to be available for the commissioners and for their work session, which is going to be on the 18th, which is next week. And their work session is going to be at the Pruitt Library. It's from 2:30 to 4:30. Everybody on our distribution list should have gotten, gotten that. If you didn't get that in your email, please let me know, and I can not only send it to you, I can put you on our distribution list. It is also on the Barnes page, and the agenda for that work session is on the Barnes page. And our December, November, December Barnes meeting is always a compliance meeting because of the holidays. And so that meeting is going to be on December 9th. We will not be having a meeting in November, so if you show up at Sunny West, we will not be there. You'll be there all by yourself. And then our November-December meeting is not going to be at Sunny West either, that will be at the Inglewood Library, and that is also listed on the Barnes page. So make sure you check on that. If you think of any additional comments or questions after today, please email them to us at barnsfund@nashville.gov. We want to have all your feedback going into preparing policy for round 16 and getting the applications ready for all of you. We are very grateful for your time, your honesty, your feedback, and your polit, your partnership. This is what helps us improve this process and continue building affordable housing opportunities across Nashville. Don't forget, I'm going to be sending out a questionnaire following this work session. Really need this questionnaire to get back to us by noon on Monday, because some of that information is going to help us going into the work session for the commissioners next week. So the sooner you get that back to us, the better, because we'll have some more insight from all of you going into our workshop with the commissioners. I want to thank the Chair, Peter Westerholm, for being a listening partner on all of these work sessions. So thank you, Peter. We appreciate you and your dedication to the Housing Trust Fund. And all of you have a wonderful weekend. It's going to be a beautiful, nice, sunny, warm weekend, and we don't know how many of those we have left. So thank you, guys. Have a great weekend, and we will see you guys later.